Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Meeting of September 5th, 2024. Please join me in salute to the flag.
Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2024 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, posted on township's website, and available here at the Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents and plans have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk website at least 10 days in advance of this evening's meeting. Complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. If that may have a roll call of board members and also board and township professionals, please.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli and Ms. Smith are absent. Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Vander Vleep is also absent. Mr. Radowitz?
Here.
Mr. Scoboe?
Here.
Mr. Vitale?
Here.
Mr. Debb?
Here.
Committeeman Lapone?
Present.
Deputy Mayor is not here. Sorry. Vice Chair Peason?
Present.
Chair Srirajji?
Here.
Mr. Coyce?
Present.
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Here.
And myself and the videographer, here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ender.
Ms. Ball, I'm looking at the thing.
I'm here.
Deborah did me dirty.
Not a good night tonight, Michael.
We'll take the pace down just a bit. Okay, first up, we have consideration of meeting minutes. First up is meeting minutes of May 9th, 2024. Mr. Bernstein, who's eligible?
Mr. Radowitz, Mr. Scoboe, Mr. Debb, Committeeman Lapone, and yourself.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Third, fourth.
Okay.
Mr. Debb?
Mr. Debb.
Yes.
Yep. Any comments from DAS? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Mr. Debb?
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone?
Yes.
Chair Srirajji?
Yes. Next, meeting minutes of June 6th, 2024.
Mr. Wagner, Mr. Radowitz, Mr. Scoboe, Mr. Vitale, Committeeman Lapone, and yourself.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Too slow.
Comments from the DAS? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone?
Yes.
Chair Srirajji?
Yes. Next, minutes of June 13th, 2024.
Mr. Wagner, Mr. Radowitz, Mr. Scoboe, Mr. Vitale, Committeeman Lapone, Vice Chair Peason, and yourself.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, comments from the DAS? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Yeah.
Committeeman Lapone?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peason?
Yes.
Chair Srirajji?
Yes. Minutes, June 11th, 2024.
Mr. Wagner, Mr. Scoboe, Committeeman Lapone, Vice Chair Peason.
Motion to approve?
Actually, July 11th.
July 11th? Did I say June?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
One second.
Comments from the DAS? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peason?
Yes.
Chair Srirajji?
Yes. Next is consideration of resolutions. We have the Sherman Track Phase 2 M&amp;M Camplain Road LLC, file number 23-PB-18-MSP, which was revised. And Mr. Bernstein, you look like you've got something to say.
I apologize to the board for bringing you all in at the beginning of last month, but this became an issue somewhat subsequent to such. So a condition has been added in the resolution that confirms that the adoption of this resolution is in fact meeting one of the conditions of Phase 1 of the Glengarry property, which if you recall, one of the conditions was that they have a fully completed and approved affordable housing application for the project. So we're asking you again to adopt the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Coyce, anything to add on your end?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to approve the revised resolution?
The eligible members are Mr. Wagner, Mr. Radowitz, Mr. Scoboe, Mr. Vitale, Committeeman Lapone, the Vice Chair, and the Chair.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second? Thank you. Any last comments? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peason?
Yes.
Chair Srirajji?
Yes. We do not have any planning board business this evening nor consideration of ordinances, so now we'll move from business from the floor for matters that are not on this evening's agenda. So if anyone would like to comment, please come forward. And as always, please refrain from any direct or indirect comments regarding warehouses in general, and please keep the comments to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your consideration.
State your name and address, even though I know it.
That's my name. For your consideration. David Brooke.
Address. Address, Mr. Brooke, for the purpose of the re-- address?
Home address.
Home address. You know, dude's been here before.
Seven Winding Way in Hillsborough.
Thank you.
I know.
Well, yeah, welcome back, everybody. We're here for some fun. As all of you know or have begun to know, this place is the best show in town. It's the place to see and be seen. And because of that, for your consideration, I would like to ask the planning board to consider the idea of live streaming the meetings. The township committee does it, and I think because of your incredible popularity, that it would make sense to begin to start to do that. I think it would be very helpful to the residents to be able to livestream and to be able to see the meetings as they are occurring. That's one. The second one as part of that, I think, which is also a really important consideration that I would ask you to think about, is public comments. And I would like to ask if there is a way as part of that to allow for public comments on hearing matters to be submitted electronically. I realize that's a question of timing, but if it is livestreamed, you could allow for comments on hearings such as this from folks who couldn't get to the meeting. And I think in the day and age that we live in with regards to electronic submissions, electronic meetings, that I think it would be a way to allow for certain members of the public who couldn't attend to be able to participate and to provide their comments electronically. My third, for your consideration, is a repeat of many meetings. I would ask that you consider getting a podium for the public to speak, because as you know, it's very intimidating to come up here and to be able to talk and feel comfortable. And for all the public that's going to be coming up, I suspect, if they can tonight, one of the ways of doing that would be to allow them to have a place where they could put their papers and feel comfortable and be able to tell you all the important things about a matter. And so I would just simply renew that request and hope that in the future we might find ourselves with a podium. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, Block 86, Lot 3, 2155 Camplain Road. In regard to the consideration of the meeting minutes, why does it take so long to get minutes from prior meetings? You have meetings from May, June, July. Why does it take so long to get the minutes from these meetings?
There's a lot. Well, you wanted to answer, Mr. Coyce. I was just going to say I know there's a review process, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I could answer that. I am happy to report that we're currently up to date. We did fall behind from some of the minutes. As you may recall, and a lot of people in this room may recall, we have a lot of very complex applications, and we have a lot of these meetings go two and a half, three-plus hours, so it does take some time for our staff to listen to the meeting and to get the minutes done. But we are working to get them done in a more timely manner, and again, happy to report that we're currently up to date, with the exception of everything we're saying right now, as these minutes are not yet done.
Thank you. Also, there are two applications before this board that the township was purchasing the property of those applicants. Have those applications been withdrawn, or are they still before the planning board? One is for JMJ4ABIL LLC, and I don't have the name of the other one, but both those properties were supposed to be bought by the township. Have they been so that they could be, the applications could be withdrawn? Are they withdrawn?
One of them is on the agenda for next week relative to that issue and/or an extension. I don't know the status of 1170.
Both are.
Both are.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
They're both on the agenda next week to be addressed.
Both of those applications are on next week's agenda, so the township hasn't bought the properties yet. All right, thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to our applications. First up is Morton Street Realty Company with a dash, with a file number of dash file 23-PB-11-SV with the time of decision of September 30th of this month. It's Block 67, Lot 1, otherwise or commonly known as 2320 Camplain Road and 10 Camplain Road, and the applicant is seeking a minor subdivision approval, C-bulk variances and waivers to subdivide 3.528 acres into two lots. Proposed Lot 1.01 to be 2.522 acres and will contain an existing 19,507 square foot building with associated site improvements. And then proposed Lot 1.02 to be 1.006 acres, and it will contain an existing 6,002 square feet building and associated site improvements on the property, and they are located in the I-1 Light Industrial District with frontage on Route 206 following the I-2 zoning standards. So with that, I will allow the attorney for the applicant to introduce himself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Ed Purcell. I'm an attorney with Price, Meese, Schulman, and Derminio here tonight on behalf of Morton Street Realty. Before we get into it, just from Mr. Bernstein's perspective, are we okay from notice and jurisdiction?
Yes.
Okay. So as the Mr. Chairman, very succinctly put, we're here for minor subdivision approval with variance relief to permit the subdivision of Block 67, Lot 1 of the township tax map. So that's a 3.5 acre lot. And just to talk a little bit about the history here, Morton Street had owned this, has owned this property since, you know, over 50 years. And while it is one lot, it really operates as two lots. There are two commercial buildings, one on each lot, and each has their own parking areas. So for the amount of time that those buildings have been around, and on one lot, they really have operated as two lots. So what we're seeking to do is take that practical reality and turn it into a legal reality. And Morton Street seeks to do that, to obtain some financial flexibility with respect to the property. Most of the bulk variances which we need are pre-existing. We've, you know, asked for those variances, and we'll put the proofs to obtain them. I'll just note there is an impervious coverage issue for proposed Lot 1.02. That's the easterly lot. So that impervious coverage there is going to be at 65.3%, where 60% is the maximum. Mr. Stires, our engineer, is going to discuss that. Unfortunately, we're not able to, you know, remove that amount of impervious coverage due to concerns about circulation and parking. The applicant would agree, however, to a deed restriction that would prevent any more impervious coverage to be added to that lot, to Lot 1.02, and only allow increases on Lot 0.01 to the extent that same would not exceed the 60% maximum for both of those properties together. So I just mentioned that now. Mr. Stires is going to talk about it, but I just want to, wanted to flag that. I know you have another agenda, another item on the agenda tonight, so we'll try to keep this brief and to the point. So with that, we have two witnesses for engineering. We have David Stires and for planning, John Tayakina. Dave, you ready to go?
I do. Dave Stires, S-T-I-R-E-S.
Dave, could you go over your educational history, your professional background?
Sure. I graduated from Lehigh University in 1985 with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. Received my engineering degree, or professional license in 1990. I worked for a family business for 30 years in Somerville, running that company for the last 15 years, and then started my own company in 2003 and have been running that ever since. I do land use development and surveying work and environmental work in the, basically in the Somerset County area, and I've testified before this board, not that often, but I have.
Okay. So you've been accepted as an expert in engineering and other land use matters?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that Mr. Stires be accepted as an expert in engineer?
Okay. Any objections from the board? Okay, seeing none, we accept. Please proceed.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Stires, you prepared the minor subdivision plan dated February 27, 2023, and last revised April 4, 2024, which was submitted to the township. Is that right?
Yes, I did. Yes.
Okay. Could you go over the subject property, maybe use that plan?
Sure. So the plant, the property has frontage on three separate roads, Old Camplain Road on the south, New Camplain Road on the north, and Route 206 on the west, or the left of the paper. So the plan itself, north is facing directly up. There's the 19,500 square foot building on the west side of the property and a 6,000 square foot building on the east portion of the property. There's some 50 parking spaces to the west of the larger building with circulation between the two Camplain Roads. I have seen, for example, FedEx truck come in and drop off. It was actually a tractor-trailer truck come in from the north and exit through the south. So circulation works well, given the fact that they do have two driveways for that property. And then there are three tenants in that particular building. The interesting, or the kind of thing that makes this subdivision not so clean is that there is a loading dock on the east side of that building, so that we would need a, an agreement between the two properties to provide for the loading and unloading to that loading dock on the, again, the east side of the subject building. The, the second building to the east is the 6,000 square foot building, and that has two access points, basically loading and unloading, work in a counterclockwise direction. They come in on the western driveway and exit through the eastern driveway. Again, the loading to the larger building, they would come in the west side, pull in behind the smaller building, and then back into the loading dock on the larger building. And then there's also a loading platform behind the 6,000 square foot building, so you would proceed down the eastern drive and then back into that driveway. And that facility has unmarked parking, but for about 15 or, 15 parking spaces or so.
With respect to the uses--
For purpose of the record, we're going to mark this as A1.
Okay.
Date on this, Mr. Stires?
Do you want me to do that now?
No.
Yeah.
Do it. I'm just, for the pur-- you can do it at the end.
Okay.
Date and the author of this document is?
It's my firm, Donald, David Stires Associates.
And the date?
Their latest revision was 4/4/24.
Thank you.
Mr. Stires, can you go over the existing uses on the property?
Yes. So the, again, the western building, which is the larger building, has three tenants. LNL Flooring is on the northern side of that building. That is the northern tenant, and they are lumber liquidators. The center building and, and what they have, they have an outlet store with its accessory storage, which is permitted under the ordinance. The center building, or center tenant, is the Ark of Somerset. They have offices for adult daycare services of the development and the disabled. Again, that is a permitted use in the, in the ordinance. And then the southern tenant is the Bridgewater.
We'll just stop right there for a second. Of those entities, the first, the first one was LNL Flooring, right? Correct?
Yes.
And the second one was Bridgewater Volvo, so that's the offices and associated storage?
Now, the Ark of Somerset is the center.
Okay.
Center building.
And then the last one is Bridgewater Volvo.
Yeah, the third or the southernmost is Bridgewater Volvo. They have offices and associated accessory storage, again, permitted by ordinance.
Okay. Now go to the other building, if you wouldn't mind?
Okay, that has a single tenant, which is the above all party rentals. They rent tents and, and supplies for parties, et cetera. And basically, they're considered a contractor facility, again, permitted by, by ordinance.
And could you go over the fencing on the property?
Sure. So behind or to the south of the smaller building or the proposed Lot 1.02 are two single-family houses, and there is a picket fence that runs from New Camplain Road and runs parallel and on the subject property about 20 feet into the, into the property and very near the back of the larger building. And then it, it turns towards the east beyond the actual property line and runs along the two residential properties, but again, on the, on the subject property and a bit north of the two residential properties until it reaches kind of the east end of that second lot where it then encroaches onto the residential property. We believe that fence is the, is owned by the applicant. The bad side or the, of the picket fences--
The unfinished side.
The unfinished side is facing towards the subject property, and the finished side is facing the two residential properties.
And as far as the, the properties that it, it goes on to that aren't the subject property, that's Lot 3 and, 3 and 4. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Or 2 and 3, yes.
Okay, 2 and 3, 2 and 3. And applicant would stipulate to remove that portion of the fence which is on the adjacent property and/or obtain a license from the property owners to keep the fence there. Is that, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you talk about parking?
Yes. The larger building on the west side has parking for 40 parking spaces, where 39 are required by ordinance. So it, it complies with the ordinance, and there's handicap spaces, et cetera. And the, the eastern building, as I indicated, they're not formal parking spaces, but your board engineer has requested that we stripe that with, with formal spaces. I, I've gone through the process of laying that out, and we can install the 10 spaces that are required with the 1 ADA space, and, and we would agree to that condition if this is accepted, this, this application.
Could you just go over the loading areas one more time, just to--
Yeah. Again, the, the western building, there is one loading dock for the one tenant in the rear. And again, as I indicated earlier, there are pickups and drop-offs by larger vehicles in that parking, parking field on the west side of the larger building. Like I said, the FedEx truck came in from the north. He pulled in, took the packages out while he was there, ran into the one of the building, or one of the tenants, and then drove out the south end. And then the, the above all party rentals, they have a loading area on the, on the rear of the building, and they also have an overhead door where they, you know, some of the equipment and the tents, et cetera, are stored inside that building.
Now, could you just go over the, the size of the two proposed lots, Lot 1.01 and 1.02?
Yeah, there's two and a half acre lot on the western lot with a large green area along Route 206. And then the Lot 1.02 is basically a one acre lot, which is what is required by ordinance along Old Camplain Road.
Can we talk about impervious coverage?
Sure. So right now, the, the overall coverage is at 45% for the existing lot. As a result of the subdivision, Lot 1.02 would exceed the allowable of 60%, and it comes in at 65.3% coverage, which is roughly 2,500 square foot over what is allowed in the ordinance.
Now, would it be possible to remove that amount from Lot, proposed Lot 1.02?
Yeah, we, we looked into it. The board engineer actually had a concept plan where he had presented to us roughly a 2,500 square foot removal. We're concerned with the circulation for the larger wheel vehicles coming in from the western driveway and circulating throughout to the eastern driveway. So we would like to agree to taking out on the eastern driveway, there's a, like a triangular area of dead space of 400 square feet. We would agree to remove that. And then, as Mr. Purcell said, we were, we would like to offer up the deed restriction where the, you know, combined those two lots would not exceed the 60% allowed in the, in the zone.
Okay. And then, so we'd also agree that with respect to Lot 1.02, that there would be no additional impervious coverage added to that lot, correct?
That's correct.
And then taken together, you could add more to Lot 1.01, but not enough that both together would exceed 60%?
That's correct.
Okay. So can you discuss what the purpose of the subdivision is?
The purposes of the subdivision is to give the applicant the flexibility for finance purposes, you know, sell one building, keep one building, whatever. I'm, I'm dealing with a project just like this in Raritan, and the financing, because of the different uses, becomes complicated, and especially with two buildings. So the fact of creating two principal structures on individual lots makes a lot of sense from that standpoint.
And could you go over the zoning and if we need any variances?
Yes. So as indicated earlier, the township code provides that the, the property fronting on Route 206 must conform to the I-2 standards, which has larger width requirement, larger front yard setback, and larger rear yard setbacks. So proposed Lot 1.01, which is on the 206 side, they will have the one I-2 standards and some of the variances with respect to proposed Lot 1.01. The minimum front yard setback, where 75 feet is required, we're proposing 54.6.
And that's the, and that's a setback off of New Camplain Road. Is that, is that right?
That is, yes. Minimum side yard setback, where 50 is required and 26.3 is proposed. That's the new lot line that runs north and south from the back of the residential Lot 2 up to Old Camplain Road. So that setback is 26.3.
Okay. And with respect to proposed Lot 1.02?
Yeah, the minimum lot depth, where 200 is required-- Yeah, the minimum lot depth, uh, where two hundred is required, uh, one hundred ninety-two is proposed. The board engineer had, uh, I believe he had one hundred and seventy-two on that. And I took a look at it, the definition is a little bit confusing. It says run a parallel line along the frontage to the midpoint of the rear yard. And the way I measured it, it was one eighty-two. And what I would suggest to the board is let us come up with the right number, uh, working with the board engineer so that we don't come in and ask for one eighty-two and the resolution says it's one eighty-two and it's really one seventy-two. So I'm, I'm just confused with the definition a little bit and, and I'd like to get it right. It's, it's between one seventy-two and one ninety-two.
Okay. And with respect to the impervious coverage?
Yeah, they, on the, um, lot one point oh two, the maximum lot coverage is allowed is sixty percent, sixty-five point three is proposed. We do, uh, propose to reduce that by four hundred square feet or so, uh, so that will be a little bit less.
Okay. And then could you go over the applicable design standards?
Yeah, the, um, let me just see where they are. Where do you want them? Under A one. Um, the, the, the buffer area, um, on the I one zone, uh, requires a twenty-foot buffer around loading and trash collection points visible from abutting residence or residential zone districts. We believe that the, uh, the areas for lot one point oh two comply. There is a dumpster, uh, an existing dumpster on New Camplain Road down by the entrance and, uh, we would either ask for a waiver or have to move that dumpster more internally, uh, on that parking area somewhere north of that, um, driveway in order to comply with that, that requirement.
And the other thing is with respect to, um, that particular language in one eighty-eight dash one oh six E four A about buffering, um, there is a, I believe, an interpretation that it also requires a buffer for that, really the entire southern property line or most of the southern property line, um, of lot one point zero one and then the entire southern property line of lot one point zero two. Um, I know that was, uh, discussed by Mr. Mayhew. Is that something that, um, we comply with and if we don't, would the applicant request a waiver from that?
Well, the, yeah, we looked at where the loading, uh, with the exception of the one I just discussed on lot one point oh one, the other loading or the dumpster areas are, are actually measured where the, where the dumpster locations are and they do exceed the twenty feet. So it's just the one that is at issue.
Okay. And then with respect to the curbing requirements?
Yeah, we would, again, as indicated, this, uh, facility was developed in the, in the seventies, it's over fifty years old, curbing was not required. And we would ask for a waiver from installing curbing and it would cause challenges relative to runoff by changing the grades behind the, uh, the parking areas.
And then the, uh, having a formalized dumpster area that's required by the checklist?
Yeah, again, you know, as indicated, the, the development is fifty years old and the, the dumpsters are, uh, with the exception of the one that we can relocate, they're internal to lot one point oh two, uh, not visible from the roadway or the neighbors and we would ask for the waiver.
Okay, so we can comply with that requirement with respect to lot one point zero one, but please request a waiver with respect to lot one point zero two, right?
Yes.
Okay. And has the applicant received any other approvals for the subject application?
Yes, we actually received all outstanding approvals, uh, that are required to date. NJ DOT has issued a subdivision access permit. This county planning board has approved it. Soil conservation has indicated that we are exempt and DRCC Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission has approved it.
Okay. Have you reviewed Mr. Mayhew's August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four engineering report?
Yes, I have.
All right, can we just go over it? Uh, we'll just use Mr. Taikina's response dated August thirtieth. And wherever we, um, agree or don't need to provide a comment, we'll just, we'll just skip that, all right?
Yeah, so under item one, we, I just indicated that there's a little bit of an interpretation on the, um, the lot depth and I would just like to review that with the board engineer so that we're on the same page. The lot depth for lot one point oh two is between one seventy-two and one ninety-two based on the three interpretations. And I, and I just want to agree to get that right as we, uh, get towards the, uh, the resolution.
So comment number two, minimum front yard in zone I two is seventy-five five feet. Table shall clarify existing front yard on New Camplain Road is only fifty-four point six and requires variance.
Correct.
So that was requested and?
Yes.
And we're, is this condition and will, that will continue, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, comment number three, minimum side yard setback of fifty feet required in zone I two, whereas only twenty-six point three feet is existing for building in the proposed lot one point zero one requires variance. And what's response to that?
That is an existing condition that will continue.
Okay. Um, we'll skip four, five, six and seven. Um, with respect to proposed variance, um, comment one, minimum lot width required in zone I two of three hundred feet, two hundred seventy-one point eight feet is reported for lot one point zero one, width shall be clarified. It appears over three hundred feet is provided.
And we will revise the plan accordingly.
Okay, so the lot width, uh, you know?
I believe it's three hundred nine point seven seven.
So we're compliant with that?
Yes.
Right? Okay. Skip number two. Number three, existing non-conforming minimum side yard setback where fifty feet required in zone I two, whereas twenty-six point three feet is provided for the existing building on the proposed lot one point zero one. See number three above, proposed subdivision would increase extent of non-conformance by adding a property line.
Yes, and the applicant is seeking a variance to continue the existing, not twenty-six point three foot non-conformity.
Okay. Um, existing non-conforming, number, comment number four, existing non-conforming minimum lot depth where twenty-two hundred feet is required, one hundred ninety-two is reported for lot one point zero two. Dimension shall be clarified, it appears only one hundred and seventy-two feet is provided.
That's, that's the same thing I've been talking about, where I would like to just get that right with, uh, the board engineer.
Okay. Maximum previous coverage is sixty percent permitted, whereas sixty-five, this is comment number five, maximum impervious coverage is sixty percent permitted, whereas sixty-five point three percent is reported for proposed lot one point zero two. Applicant should revise the impervious coverage form and or the subdivision plans to adjust, to address the discrepancy in proposed impervious coverage reported between form and plan.
I think that has been done.
Yeah, correct. Um, the rest of this has to do with the impervious coverage, which we just discussed, so we'll skip that. Uh, next is, you know, we already went over that. So we'll talk about general comments. Number one, proposed lot one point zero one has an existing fence that is shown to continue onto proposed lot one point zero two, but we discussed that as well. Um, oh, here's for comment number two under general comments, we recommend the applicant identify waste disposal facility locations on site with appropriate buffering. Um, I think we, um, partially agree to that, right?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're shown on the plan with the setbacks. Uh, there's three, uh, dumpsters located on lot one point oh two and then the one out on the driveway, uh, for one point oh one.
Okay. Comment three, as per section one eighty-eight dash one oh six E four A for, oh, you know, we talked about that as well. Go to comment number four, based on applicant correspondence, it is our understanding that nine thousand eight hundred and forty square feet and four thousand four hundred square feet of space proposed on lots one point zero one and one point zero two respectively is for storage purposes, the parking shall be revised to state same.
Okay, there, there's a small discrepancy between the, the plan and the, um, the sheets that were provided to Hillsborough. And the discrepancy has to do with the property record cards have one number and the building footprint was slightly different than the property record cards. And when we went to DOT, they had us adjust the parking to the actual building footprint, which was a, whatever, fifty square foot difference. So that, that's the discrepancy and we'll get that cleaned up.
Okay. Uh, with respect to, we'll skip number five, comment number six, required loading spaces per one eighty-eight dash eighty-six shall be calculated for each lot and depicted or a waiver requested.
Yeah, the, each lot requires one loading dock and each lot has a, uh, loading area.
Okay. Um, we will skip to comment nine, the applicant shall clarify if there is any existing stormwater management basin present on the site.
No, I think the, uh, the development predated stormwater management and so, uh, the, as far as we can see, there's no, there is one pipe that runs, uh, behind lot one point oh two out to a stream towards the east.
Okay. Uh, we suggest the, comment number ten, we suggest the board consider requiring removal of existing paving encroaching onto block sixty-seven, lot four. What's applicant's response to that?
To the extent that the adjacent owner agrees, uh, to the removal, we will remove that pavement.
Okay. Comment number eleven, stormwater drainage will be clarified along the proposed lot lines between lots one point zero one and one point zero two to turn, to determine if one or two drainage easements will be required. Easements will be mutual access and drainage.
I spoke to, uh, the board engineer on this, the, the water, the runoff basically goes west to east, so the easement would be required on lot one point oh two. And we talked about a blanket easement, basically not, uh, prohibiting that flow of runoff from one point oh one onto one point oh two and we will include that language in the, uh, overall description.
And then we're also going to provide an, an access easement, correct, for lot, um, for lot one point oh one's use of lot one point oh two for the, um, for, for the loading bay?
Yes.
Right? All right. Uh, comment number twelve, two wetland areas are shown on the plans, areas are reported as shown per the NJDEP GeoWeb, no site investigation or delineation has been submitted. If wetland areas exist as shown and are of ordinary value, a fifty-foot wide buffer transition area would be required by the NJDEP. Portions of existing paving exist within the, within the potential NJDEP buffer.
To the extent the DEP permits are required and the applicant will obtain them.
Okay. Go moving on, subdivision plat comments, um, we'll skip, we'll go to number three, the applicant shall clarify if the subdivision shall be perfected by deed or plat.
We would prefer filing by deed since it's a minor subdivision.
Uh, comment number four, the boundary line of any easement shall be monumented at its intersection with all existing or proposed street lines. Such easement dedication shall be expressed on the plat as follows, easement granted to the township of Hillsborough as provided for in the development regulation ordinance of the township of Hillsborough as per section one eighty-eight dash forty-five D of the township ordinance.
We don't believe that there are any easements required to the township of Hillsborough. Uh, the stormwater easement that we talked about would be a blanket easement on, uh, one point oh two that would prohibit blockage of runoff from lot one point oh one and would include the access, uh, easement that allows lot one point oh one to utilize the drive in, on lot one point oh two.
All right, comment number five, applicant has stated that an access easement shall be provided to the owner of lot one point zero one to cross lot one point zero two for loading area access on the east side of lot point one zero one. Applicant should, shall submit the required easement with meets and bounds descriptions and depict same on plan.
Again, that would be a blanket easement, uh, and, and we will provide that to the board's attorney and, and professionals for review.
And then last comment is, we, number six, we recommend that the applicant add a title block to the final plat of subdivision, including a signature block for certification by the chairman and secretary of the approving authority and the county planning board as same as being filed.
Uh, again, we would prefer filing by deed.
Okay. All right. Have Mr., um, Mr. Stires, have you reviewed Mr. Coys' August ninth, twenty twenty-four planning report?
Yes, I have.
And do you have any responses to that report?
The only comment is the, um, again, the, the lot width for one point oh one, uh, will correct that to three oh nine point seven seven and eliminate the need for that variance.
Okay. Um, that's all I have for Mr. Stires.
Thank you. Mr. Mayhew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to reference our office letter that the applicant's been discussing, uh, dated August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. And I think it's worth discussing, uh, four or five items that I'm not sure, uh, our office would, uh, agree with the applicant's, uh, response. The first would be more of, um, a way to facilitate this evening, uh, under proposed variances. Where a lot, minimum lot depth of two hundred is required and the applicant has reported it's a hundred and ninety-two feet, our office thinks it's a hundred and seventy-two. My suggestion, if the board wants to move forward tonight, is to grant the waiver for a hundred and ninety-two feet. And, uh, if in conversations with David Coys, we come up with a different number, then that could be put on to the record. But I don't see any negative in granting the waiver up to the hundred and ninety-two at this point.
And the applicant would be okay with that?
The next item is impervious cover. Um, I understand the applicant stated that they don't believe enough pavement could be removed. We received today a color rendering of the site, which is what's shown up on these boards. And I would point out that approximately twenty-five hundred square feet of impervious cover would need to be removed to meet the sixty percent limit. Uh, I would point out that lot one oh two has twenty-four hundred ninety square feet of gravel paving. The gravel paving is shown, there's different grade shade right here in the rear of one oh two and there's a thin strip along the eastern border of one oh two. I would point out that the gray gravel in the rear of lot one oh two is, uh, majority of it's within the twenty-foot buffer area. I understand the applicant's testified that they agreed there would be a small triangle of about four hundred square feet that could be removed. I, I can help the board understand where that is. That's, uh, up at the entrance on the eastern driveway, you'll notice that the driveway widens significantly and to the point at the front corner of the building, the applicant is suggesting taking a triangle of pavement off of there. So they really only need twenty-one hundred more square feet of pavement to meet the sixty percent. I've shared with the applicant and I, um, and with David, there are other opportunities on this site. And as I said, even the, just taking the gravel off gets you where you need to go. The other obvious area, I don't know.
So we would, we would agree to take that gravel off? That's what you're saying? If we didn't, you know, that wasn't a suggestion that we had discussed previously? We know we had talked about other portions, but between, we would take that four hundred feet off of the, um, nearest, nearest to Old Camplain Road and we would agree to remove that gravel portion?
And I think that gets you where you need to be.
Okay. Good.
Thank you. The, um, next item that I wanted to discuss is the buffer. The sketch plan that came in today does show a twenty-foot buffer, um, running along the rear of lot one oh two, which is the right-hand property. And then it extends along the eastern border, lot one oh one. It's really tough to see it, but, yeah, the sketch that came in today shows that require twenty-foot buffer running along the rear of one oh two and then running along the east of one oh one. Uh, our review letter stated that since the property across New Camplain Road is zoned RA, that also requires a buffer. So this twenty-foot would have to extend up into this point right here because this corner lot's not RA. Is there any reason that the plan wouldn't be revised to also show that twenty-foot?
With respect to the, the twenty feet that are on, that's directly on Old Camplain Road, I think we would?
New Camplain.
I mean, sorry, New Camplain, New Camplain Road. I think we would request a, a waiver with respect to that portion of it. The other portion of it, um, that is the, I guess it would be the, um, southerly. I guess it would be the southerly side of lot 1.02. I think obviously we can comply there. You know, the 20-foot buffer on the going down between the adjoining lots and the building on lot 1.01, is that, will we be compliant with that, Dave?
We're basically following the fence line at that point. So.
Well, I guess I want to clarify, there's two issues here. One, showing the required buffer on the plan. And then two, asking for a waiver if you don't provide the criteria to meet that buffer.
So one, we provide, well, we will, we will revise the plan to show the required buffer.
So you'll add that buffer along New Camplain Road that's opposite the RA district.
We'll add that, correct.
Okay. I leave it to the applicant and the board to discuss whether any of these buffers are satisfactory as they are now, or if the applicants, wait, at this point, the applicant is not proposing any additional landscaping. Our office defers that discussion to between applicant and the board. But I just wanted to clarify where the buffer is required. Thank you. The next item was the stormwater. I just want to clarify for the board, lot 102, especially in the loading area drains towards the adjoining property. And we want to make sure, and I think the applicants agree, to provide some kind of description of an easement so that the future owner of lot 102 doesn't block, I mean, you could see 10, 20 years from now, someone blocking that drainage accidentally. Or we want to make sure that that's covered. And the same thing with access.
We would agree to that.
And then lastly, I would just suggest to the board that they consider the dumpster issue. I know there's, there's several waivers requested and it is an old site and many of it was built before lot of design criteria. But it may not be difficult to properly address some of the trash, which are just dumpsters on the edge of the parking lot. There, there may be some opportunities to add the appropriate trash disposal area with, with appropriate landscaping. And I'll leave that to the board and to decide. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayhew adequately addressed a number of concerns and I am left with, with nothing to ask further. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, questions?
Could I ask question on the southernmost part of that big building? There's two driveways that come off of Camplain Road that just end at a walkway. What are those for?
They were loading, loading driveways to garage doors that are not currently utilized.
So that's impervious, that's basically just used for, is it being utilized for anything right now than just blacktop?
The one dumpster that we're relocating is currently in one of those drives, but no.
So is that where you tend to keep a dumpster possibly or relocate or make a proper enclosure in one of those? And have it fenced in and buffered?
That would eliminate the need for reducing the parking count. I mean, we could.
We could keep it where it is or we could, you know, we were suggesting moving it right adjacent to that, correct? Right. Whoever the board prefers. You know, the board wishes us to keep it where it is.
Where, where is it now? I'm sorry, we lost the plan in there, but for the.
It's in the westernmost drive into that garage door.
Okay. Where, could they make a, Mr. Mayhew, could they make a proper trash enclosure utilizing one of those, those driveways?
There you go.
I don't know if that's actually that they have a.
That is, but we're talking about the.
That's a good everybody there.
There it is.
So here's the dumpster we're discussing.
Right.
Well, and this driveway, your testimony is not being utilized at this time?
That's correct.
So that dumpster could be relocated farther in, out of the buffer. It could have appropriate screening around it. And just for the purposes of this video, the screen, it could be moved back where this car is and this car would move up here. You lose one space accessing the dumpster.
Or we'll just use the driveway.
Or they can come straight in the driveway, straight up.
Turn it, we can shift, we could turn the dumpster so it opens up.
Well, then you have the trash truck pulling in and pulling back out onto the road. Having the movement occur in the parking lot would be safer.
And also, Mr. Chairman, there may be also fire access concerns as well to consider.
Well, I'm just trying to get a better way so we don't see a dumpster, right, to have enclosed with a proper buffer and have it look more tidy.
All right. So we would, I think what we would certainly agree to, as far as locationally, to move it, you know, up that drive and then have the, the access to it by a dump truck or, you know, whoever needs to grab it, be by way of the parking area. So we would stripe out one of those parking spaces.
All right. You work with Mr. Mayhew on that plan and address it with proper buffering and trees, et cetera, and evergreens to hide it.
And as far as the, you know, buffering, obviously, you know, that's a, there is impervious coverage there. It's an existing condition. It's been like this.
At least put a fence up so you don't see it on the sides.
I think at this point, you know, the applicant would prefer to not do that, given the fact that then it would, you know, for, for future purposes, if that were ever to be, become usable, it would inhibit the ability of the, the owner to use that door, that drive.
So it's still an active door, is what you're saying?
Not right now, but in the future, if someone were to want to use it.
So we can, we can move the dumpster north in the parking lot, take out one space. Right now, we've shown it to take one space out. We'll add that space back, move it further to the north and put some fencing around it to buffer.
Okay with that. I, I think it just moves it away from the street and makes it look.
Okay. So we'll say we're going to move it within, within the driveway. Okay, fine.
So just to be clear, you plan on keeping the loading dock behind the, of that building and you're going to get a granted easement for that use for future?
Yes.
Right? Okay. And is there anything planned? I didn't notice any other plantings being proposed as far as any other buffering between the two properties, the residential ones and the, you know, say where that stone is being removed?
Well, you, you have the picket fence between the stone and the houses.
Okay. So that's, how, is that like a six-foot fence?
Yeah, it's a six-foot solid fence that's currently there.
Okay. That's all I got for now.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Yes. You mentioned parking before on the proposed lot 1.02 and parking's not depicted on the site plan that we have right now. And you mentioned that you would stripe for parking. Where would the parking be?
There would be five spaces on the west side of the building, including 188 spot and five spaces on the east side of the building. So you, and you would still have a 25-foot drive aisle on the, for example, on the west side, west of the parking spaces, you would still have a 25-foot drive aisle. And then on the east side, east of the parking spaces, you would again have a 25-foot drive aisle. So you would have the parking that would conform to the township ordinance.
And on the, the building, would they be closer to the north corners of the buildings or the south corners of the building?
They basically could go from the north to the south. It's, it's, you know, you need 45 feet for nine-foot spaces and the building, I believe, is 50 feet.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, then I will ask for a motion to open the public.
I'm moved. Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Okay. If there's anyone from the public that would like to question this witness on his testimony, please feel free to come up and state your name and address for the record. Okay, I see no takers.
All right. All right. All right. We'll call Mr. Tykeena to provide planning testimony.
My name is John Tykeena. T is in Thomas, A I, K is in Kelly, I N is in Nancy, A. I am a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. I have been since I completed my studies at Rutgers University in 1992. I've had the pleasure of keeping my license in good standing for the last 32 years. They tell me that was the challenge. My license is current in good standing. Early in my career, I did municipal and county planning, including authoring land use ordinance, a lot of good stuff. But most of the time I do this. I testify on behalf of applicants throughout the state and around the country on land use matters large and small. And I have never appeared before the Hillsborough Planning Board. I have appeared before your zoning board and other towns throughout Somerset County.
So Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that Mr. Tykeena be accepted as an expert planner?
Okay. Any objections? Saying none, we accept.
Thank you.
Continue.
So I am, I am now, you know, Dave kind of stole all my thunder. I have nothing left to say. I'm down to literally bulk variances to kind of continue existing conditions. We have a front yard setback of 54.6 feet on lot 1.01 that we are proposing to retain. That will be a C1 variance, a unique property condition affecting this specific property. Removing that, removing building to provide a compliance setback would be hardship to the applicant and we believe this, we satisfy the standard for a C1 variance. Likewise, the minimum side yard setback is 26.3 feet. That is an existing condition that we are continuing. The extension of the, of the lot line is greater than 26.3 feet. So the 26.3 feet that exists is the, is the variance condition and that is an existing condition again, that we would seek to continue as a C1 variance. And then finally, we will have the minimum lot depth discussion at 192 feet for lot 1.02. That again would be a C2, a C1 variance. There's no additional land to be accommodated, to acquired, excuse me, to provide for, to eliminate that variance. That is not a variance that is exacerbated by the nature of the subdivision. It is one that exists in the existing condition. And again, providing for additional land would be a hardship. In this instance, because we meet the criteria for the C1 variances, that is our, the satisfaction of our positive criteria. In terms of our negative criteria, as you know, there are two standards. One is that we're not a substantial detriment to public good. And secondly, that we're not a substantial impairment to the zone plan and the master plan. In terms of the public good, these aren't obnoxious uses. They're uses that have been in the community, buildings that have been in the community for 50 years. Going through the process, I've actually learned the entire history of them dating back to 1969 and 1971. It was actually relatively fascinating, frankly. But they have been here for more than 50 years. They've existed in the conditions that you see them. They're certainly not a detriment to the surrounding area in any way, shape or form. And providing for the subdivision will not provide any detriment as well. Secondly, we have a, the intent to, that we're not impairing the intent and purpose of the master plan and the zone plan. Your land, your land use and development ordinance, your statements of purpose basically mirror the municipal land use law. And again, we, we are satisfying some of those by providing sufficient space in appropriate locations. Additionally, we're encouraged in the coordination of various public and private procedures, shaping land development with a view towards lessening the cost of that development to the efficient use of the land. Again, we think that maintaining the existing conditions as they are would be appropriate, given their longstanding history in town. We think that there will not be any detriment and that we have managed to satisfy all the various contingencies affecting this, whether they be, whether they be the DRCC, the county, soil erosion, and even NJDOT. And we got an NJDOT permit in less than a year. That's unheard of. That's unheard of. And we were able to do that. So when they, Mr. Stires said that we, we made sure we matched what they asked for, that's why. They were, they were ready to, they were ready to sign and that's why we did it. So coordinating all those different agencies is, is a challenge for every applicant. And I think we've been able to kind of meet all of our different masters here. And then finally, in terms of your master plan, your examination in 2018 actually has several references directly to the I1 and I2 zones and the adjacent residential to the south to be rezoned actually to residential. Having the smaller lot in the rear adjacent to the residential and additionally with our, with our deed restriction that we're posing, that limits us to the 60% coverage on the combined 3.5 acres or approximately 92,000 square feet of, of impervious coverage. That will further limit development of the site and keep it to the scale. That does not negatively impact our adjoining residential uses. The front lot meets the higher standard of the I2 under the ordinance, requiring lots along 206 to meet that. And, and we do so. So I think that we, we mesh nicely with the master plan recommendation and we're certainly not impairing them in any way. In terms of our design standards, the board is permitted to grant the design standards when the little enforcement will be impractical or somewhat of a hardship. So we think it's appropriate that we can designate the, the buffer zones and indicate where they are. But we believe that for that short stretch along New Camplain Road, that would be appropriate to keep the existing condition. We do, we do have fairly good landscaping on the west side of the site, but keep the existing condition with just the lawn in between the two loading driveways. We think that that's appropriate. It's actually the condition that was approved by the zoning board in 1971. But we think it's appropriate. We'll move the dumpster out of the buffer and into the parking lot with a fence around it to give us a little bit better screening there. But maintaining the rest of that condition, we think would be appropriate and, and certainly not, not impair, not be any detriment to anyone. In terms of trash collection, et cetera, again, by relocating the one that's visible, we think we're definitely meeting the intent of the ordinance. The rest of them are kind of settled back into that rear yard area on 1.02. It is fairly well vegetated there. I wouldn't call it landscaped. It's, it's well vegetated with existing trees. There is a six-foot fence there that, that screens any views of the dumpsters. They're very small. They're, you know, little three and four yarders. So we think that, that that is appropriate there and certainly no detriment to our neighbors. The rest of the, the only other one is really the curbing. And as Mr. Stires testified, providing curbing on all these parking lots would be a hardship, not only the expense of the curbing, but it would change the existing drainage patterns, which actually, you know, everything old is new again. The new, the new stormwater now wants these disconnected drainage patterns. They want the parking lots to be able to flow off into adjacent green areas. And we think that maintaining that, that existing condition is a better, is a better plan that would be putting in, putting in the curbs. And it would, that would be unduly burdensome on the applicant. So I believe for these reasons, the board has the ability to grant the relief requested. And I'm available for your questions.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know. I'm looking at Mayhew and then Coys. Mayhew.
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I also have no, no questions for Mr. Tykeena. Thank you.
I'm the assistant planner.
I have no comments.
Thank you. Eric, anything? Okay. So we are open to public or do I have to reopen?
Board first and then.
That's right. See, no one's got comments. I already have.
Open it to the public.
Okay. So we're open to public or do I have to take another roll? Okay. So is there anyone from the public that would like to, there we go. Knew there'd be a comment. Well, you didn't have a comment last. Well, you didn't have a comment last time, so.
I'll be very brief. David Brooke, anyway. The area where the gravel is being taken out, I don't know, the lot area, is that going to be vegetated as the planner?
Yes.
And is it landscaping, planting, or just grass?
Just grass.
I would ask that trees be planted or some other vegetation, Mr. Chairman, simply because it is adjacent to a residential lot, and it would be nice to have something more than grass as a further way of providing shielding. Thank you.
It's certainly a fenced-in area there behind that parcel. You know, I think the applicant would prefer it to be grass.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Comments? Wow. Any questions for this witness on his testimony? Seeing none, I'm going to entertain a motion to close to public? No?
Not unless the public wants an overall comment on the matter.
That's true. Okay. Thank you.
Open it up for the public for last.
For last, okay. Do I have to do a roll on that one? Okay, so we are still open. So this is the last bite at the apple before we make a decision on this application. So if anyone wants to come up and provide their thoughts, one way or the other. Okay. Now we'll have a motion to close to public.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Scobbo had the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I just have a couple comments, and would you like me to be my closing, Mr. Chairman? Okay. So with respect to the lot depth issue for lot 1.02, I know there was a bit of a discussion. Is it 172 feet? Is it 192 feet? So I think maybe the way to approach it, from what Mr. Mayhew was saying, is maybe we could request an approval for 172. And then, and then to the extent we determine that it's less than that, we can modify, you know, we can modify it. If it's more than that, I'm sorry, if it's more than that, we can modify it, but just to ask for the larger amount or the lesser amount, that way we have the approval. And then if it turns out that, based on analysis, it's more than that, then we can certainly, there can be something on the record to advise the board of that. And the resolution can reflect that. With respect to, is it okay with you, Mr. Mayhew?
Mr. Purcell, how are you going to mark the record if it turns out to be more than 172 without coming back to this board?
Well, I guess, I guess what I could say is, it's a good comment, Mr. Bernstein. I think we could...
Well, you're...
Because certainly, we could certainly try to revise the, well, you know what? Let's just get 172. Let's just follow for 172.
Our office would agree with that. You're asking for 28 feet of waiver.
Yeah.
And Mr. Bernstein, if it turns out between Mr. Coys's office and our office, we determine that they only needed 20, that's just less of a waiver. And I think that would be an issue at that point.
And I guess if it's more, if it's more, then we'll have to come back.
Well, it wouldn't.
Or if it's...
It's not going to be more.
Right.
We're agreeing to request what your engineer has stated, which is that only 172 feet is provided. Therefore, you're 28 feet short, and that's the waiver you're requesting. That's the waiver our office would suggest the board consider. And if Mr. Coys in our office determines it was a little less, then so be it.
And that's acceptable.
The resolution is going to reflect that that determination is being made in conjunction between the board planner and the board engineer.
And that's acceptable from the applicant's perspective. With respect to the impervious coverage, again, we would accept, you know, we would be okay with removing the gravel and then the 400 square feet up on top of near Old Camplain Road.
So just to clarify, you're going to meet the 60%?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
And then we will agree to, you know, move the dumpster from where it is adjacent to New Camplain Road to the interior portion of the property along the, in the driveway.
And you would agree to screen the relocated?
And to fence it, to fence it. Correct. Okay. So I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page with respect to those items. But as Mr. Tykeena said, and as I said at the beginning, you know, we're asking for a subdivision here to make a legal reality. What is the practical reality right now? That these are two lots that operate independently of one another. We're just asking for a subdivision to legally effectuate that. It's been that way for 50 years. We've shown adequate proofs for the variances that we need. I think we've given a fair bit as far as the impervious coverage issue. So certainly, I think that would be appropriate for the board to grant this subdivision with these variance requests and waiver requests.
Mr. Bernstein.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayhew, for purposes of the record, can you indicate exactly what gravel and/or other impervious coverage is being removed?
The different color on A1.
Pay attention, Michael.
On the color rendering exhibit, the gravel is shown as a darker gray at the rear of the eastern property.
What will be 1.02?
Yes. Correct. And the triangle area would be a piece of the asphalt paving on the eastern driveway of the eastern building.
Also on lot 1.02?
Correct.
And you believe that that's sufficient to reduce the impervious coverage?
I do. And if it's within a few square feet short, I'm sure the applicant's engineer can find a couple more square feet of... To make it work. I'm confident that the applicant can adjust it to be 60%.
The other question, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, is the issue of the, what's to be placed in the buffer area, grass or landscaping? Or both?
Can I ask, the fence is owned and maintained by the applicant?
Yes.
So they agree to maintain the fence throughout the two owners, right? Even the subdivided half the fence is one owner, whatever?
Yeah, I think what we've, yes, correct. We would maintain that fence, and there's a portion of it that goes onto the adjoining property, and we would either obtain a license from them.
Or just pull it back.
You know, or pull it back if they don't want it on their property.
Licensing agreement would have to be provided to the town, to my office for review, and ultimately to the board.
And as far as the, I'm looking at Google Earth here, there's really, there's still a lot of vegetation around that that's not depicted on the map here. So you can't even see the fence from the road.
That is correct.
So there's plenty of, you know, I'm a tree guy, so everybody knows that. So I, there's, you can't even see the fence. So I think that there's plenty of trees to hide it. So grass, I think, would be appropriate.
Thank you.
In the absence, Mr. Chairman, of any other items from the board, then the resolution is to adopt the application from Morton Street Realty Company, file number 23-PB-11-SV, block 67, lot 1, as per, on Camplain Road and Old Camplain Road, as per the discussions originally announced by the chair, as well as all waivers requested, all variances requested, all conditions of the parties as set forth in this hearing, and the further discussion on the record after closing by Mr. Purcell from Mr. Mayhew.
Okay. So with that, we have a motion to approve with the conditions laid out by Mr. Bernstein and agreed, obviously, by the applicant.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay. With that, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes.
Yes.
Benjamin Leponti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peason?
Yes.
Chair Serraz?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. And we are going to have a recess. According to my Verizon time, it says 8:28. We'll reconvene at 8:40 per Verizon time. Thank you. We're back in session. So next up is Weston Road LLC with file number 22-PB-03-MSPV. Time of decision is September 6. And this application is continued from June 6 of this year without further notice. So I'm just going to let everybody introduce themselves again. So Mr. O'Grady?
Good evening, person. Good evening, members of the board. Mike O'Grady, Savo Shaw Law Firm, on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening, members of the board. Jordan Ash with Recker Danzig on behalf of the Hearthstone Homeowners Association.
Good evening, board members. Mike Sinkovich from Lieberman Blacker and Sinkovich on behalf of Hearthstone and Hillsborough Homeowners Association.
Mr. Chairman, for purposes of the record, I have received a certification of absent board member examination of record slash eligibility to vote, signed by Mr. Peason as to the April 4 meeting and the June 6 meeting, which makes him eligible to participate in this evening's meeting. I do not believe we have, same for Mr. Deb and Mr. Vitale, who I'm sure have just been sitting at home all summer long watching videos. So for the purposes of the record, they are sitting on the dais for observation only. They are not participating. They cannot vote.
There you go. Turn your nameplates down.
So it is from Mr. Scobbo to Mr. Radowitz tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We, when we last broke, we were in the middle of Dr. Clay Emerson's testimony, and I'm happy to bring him back up unless the board would like to address another issue that arose before that. I don't know.
Is somebody going to mention the secret words? Are we just going to sort of wait?
I'd just like to have, for the record, put out the last memo that was just put out by Mr. Mayhew dated, for the record, August 21st regarding the ongoing standing issue of the easement and how it affects the application in general and how it's, in his opinion, still in effect. And pretty much prohibits the design of the building as it is today. So I'd like to hear how we address that.
Well, obviously, this, there was an easement that was created for the benefit of the township as a result of litigation for the township's failure to disclose a landfill that was sold on this property. The easement was placed in that location at the time by the engineer who designed the site, the site plan that was ultimately part of the settlement. And wetlands have encroached into that area, so the applicant's proposing a relocation. The easement, I believe that there is a recorded easement, although it's never been constructed. There's potentially legal issues related to the abandonment of the easement by the township since a certain amount of time has passed. But the intent of the applicant is to relocate the easement, build a roadway at significant cost to the applicant to allow access to the dump property. I think this ship has sailed, frankly. This board took jurisdiction, deemed this application complete. We've been hearing this case for 935 days.
But who's counting?
What's that?
But who's counting?
Yeah. So legally, I think that this is, you know, courts, courts address this, and it's come up quite a bit about jurisdiction and I, you know, land use boards, you act within the matters that are under your jurisdiction, whether it's municipal, county, state. Other entities in every application have exclusive jurisdictions over certain portions of it. For example, Soil and Sediment, you know, County Planning Board has Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Plan, certain powers of approval for the jurisdiction of the county board, for drainage, for roadways. There's flood control under state statutes. There's water quality and watershed under the administrative code. There's Wetlands Protections Act, things like that. So a planning board's authority in reviewing a site plan application is limiting to determine, limited to determining whether the plan conforms with the municipality zoning and site plan ordinances. We're citing W.L. Goodfellow's Company of Turnersville, Inc. versus Washington Township Planning Board. In this case, the township committee has ultimate decision-making power on whether they wish to relocate that easement, whether, again, there's a legal issue of whether the easement is still valid. But once this, this, once Mr. Maskey deemed the application complete, this board took jurisdiction, you know, obviously, there's fairness issues related to hundreds of thousands of dollars and monies expended to comply with recommendations from Panoni's office, including sound experts and environmental experts. We've had every single expert, you know, well beyond a typical land use application. So respectfully, it's an outside agency approval. It should be a condition. I can't remember this board ever denying to hear an application, especially after, you know, 930 days, based upon relocation of an easement. We deal with county easements all the time. They're a condition of approval. We deal with the pipeline all the time. It's a condition of approval. So, you know, it would obviously be very unfair for the board to reverse course and refuse to hear the application moving forward. It should be concluded. Hopefully, it'll be concluded in the next few meetings. But yeah, I mean, that's my legal position, is that there's legal questions about the easement potentially. We can't build an easement in the wetlands. So that's, that's the engineering basis for it, for the relocation, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. There is an easement. The easement is recorded. Hillsborough Township has a property right to that easement. This planning board respectfully, as its powers are derived from the municipal land use law, it does not have the authority to compel relocation of an easement so as to impair, burden the rights of Hillsborough. It's Hillsborough Township's decision, and its decision alone as to whether agree to move that easement. I guess maybe a quiet title action or something could also be filed, but this board cannot do so. This is a significant issue. I agree with Mr. Mayhew that, you know, this changes the entire application if this easement can't be moved. And for that reason, I do believe that we should deal with this issue first rather than waste any more time of this board. And just citing, you know, the main case on this issue, Klein versus Burnsville Association Incorporated, 267 NJ Super 473, sort of Paul Division case from 1993, just makes it clear that, again, as I stated before, this is a property right that Hillsborough has, and the planning board respectfully isn't in a position to compel relocation, nor, of course, can the property owner, the applicant compel relocation. So I don't know what this application would look like if Hillsborough wouldn't agree to move the easement, the township committee. And I think it's an issue that needs to be addressed immediately. And that's our position. Thank you.
Nobody's suggesting that this board has the authority to relocate an easement. I agree with Mr. Sinkovich's comments in relation to the case law that has hashed that issue out. In fact, there's a seminal case from Hillsborough regarding the movement of an access easement. Again, we, the applicant has relied upon the board's completeness determination, and they've relied to their detriment. And it's our position that this matter should be brought to a vote after all this time. I believe that the board professionals have had some quite significant escrow bills on this case, probably in the area of over $100,000. So to allow an application to proceed seven and a half times past the 120-day requirement, bill $50,000 to $100,000 in escrows, and then take the position that we don't have jurisdiction? bill $50,000 to $100,000 in escrows, and then take the position that we don't have jurisdiction, ship has sailed.
I'm unaware, in all the years I've been doing municipal land use law, that the determination of completeness in and of itself therefore prevents a planning board or a zoning board from dealing with the application before it, simply because somebody says it met the checklist. I will point out, first of all, I'm a little fascinated because everybody sitting up here, all the hired guns, so to speak, have had this for two-plus weeks. And I got to give you guys credit. You were like, silence is golden. I kept waiting for somebody to, I'm not, that's not a response looking for.
I wasn't, I wasn't mailed the letter. I received it today as I was reviewing.
Well, it was emailed to everybody two-plus weeks ago. We've, it's also been up on Civic Clerk, but the issue of whether you've determined it to be complete therefore prevents you from doing this is somewhat non sequitur. Secondly, I will point out for the record that co-counsel for applicant submitted a request to the township committee, it appears approximately two years ago, asking to relocate the infamous easement in question, and nothing ever came of that with the township committee. And as far as we can tell, nothing ever occurred regarding following that up. It was, look, I don't think anyone here has necessarily, what I would refer to as clean hands, but it's there. And it's in the middle of a building, and the last time I looked, this planning board has no authority to condition an approval or to deal with this issue when it's outside the jurisdiction of the planning board. And if you take Mr. O'Grady's argument to its conclusion, it would be approve the application subject to a condition that the township committee may never agree to, followed by litigation if the township committee chooses not to agree to it, over an application that frankly should be addressed before the planning board makes an ultimate determination as to whether or not this application is viable. If the township committee wants to agree to move its easement, and I don't think there's a dispute separate and apart from Mr. O'Grady that somehow it's either disappeared because things have grown in it, or that we, the township has somehow given it up, which it never does. And if that does, then we can argue that in front of, fill in the blank, judge, whoever that may be at this point, who'll hear it. But the fact of the matter is, there's a letter out there that recommends to the board, from the board engineer, that until the easement issue is addressed, the application should not go forward. Now, it's up to the applicant tonight whether or not, what it wants to do. Leaving aside how many days this has been and why we've been there, this is, you know, a broken record in that issue. The time of decision's tomorrow. Applicant's choice is to either, based on the Mayhew letter, take Mr. Mayhew's recommendation and go to the township committee and see what they will do. And I will point out that Mr. Lapani will be conflicted at, at least at my opinion. I leave that to Mr. Willard ultimately to decide, since it's a planning board application still pending, and possibly the deputy mayor as well, and see whether or not the township committee will entertain a relocation of its easement. Option two is that the applicant can choose not to continue the time of decision through tonight, and the board can make a decision. If we get to that point, I'll have some comments about all of that issue, but ultimately, it will either involve somebody or somebody's headed either to Somerville, Flemington, or Belvedere, depending on who's hearing prerogative writ matters in the vicinity right now. Right now, it seems to be Flemington. Or the board can continue this application and continue to hear it with the ultimate understanding we're going to get to this point one way or the other. You're either going to get to it because the applicant's going to ask you to approve the application, and the easement is a condition. And I'm not so sure that the planning board is any more authorized to agree to a different easement that isn't theirs to agree to. It's not the applicant's easement. It's not some, it's, it's an easement to a township piece of property, and it's a township easement. And the history of this property is long known, and the fact is that the applicant knew what it was it buying when it bought the property, and is now here to develop it. It's up to, it's up to the board, it's up to the applicant, it's up to the objectors on what else they want to put before you, but ultimately, at some point, a decision has to be made this evening as to what we're doing with this application. Obviously, I will also point out for purposes of the record that the zoning for this property has changed since the application was filed. If the application is withdrawn, there is no guarantee that the applicant will be able to come back before this board. It can come back before the zoning board, come back before this board seeking a warehouse application. We, at the moment at least, pending ongoing litigation of which this applicant is not a party to, warehouses are no longer permitted here in Hillsborough. So all of those things have to be played out. My suggestion is, obviously, if Mr. O'Grady wants to put anything more, Mr. Sinkovich or Mr. Ash on the record, I think at this point, the question is in the applicant's hands, where do they want to go with this application tonight?
Yes, so we want to continue, and, I mean, we've already finished our case in chief also. This is the objectors case. So, again, you know, I think in, in theory, and this was brought up early on, and, you know, my impression was it was a bit of a wait and see, to see what the planning board does. And if you approve it, I would suspect, although I could be wrong, that the township will acquiesce to the relocation out of the wetlands. But again, I mean, it, this is just way too late to be making this determination, that these plans were submitted, I believe, in 2022, early 2022. This issue should have been determined perhaps in completeness, perhaps with an owner's consent, as we've talked about on these applications, but after, you know, the, the type of reliance that these, that this applicant has had, I think that this application should finish on its merits. We go to a vote, and then, and then we'll take it as an outside agency issue. I mean, I don't recall ever, this board ever refusing to hear an application because of a change in a right of way. I mean, we, we do this all the time with the pipeline. We've done it with the railway. We do it constantly with utilities. It's not an uncommon issue to have to relocate an easement to, to develop land. So I think it's the outside agency that has authority to approve or disapprove the relocation, subject to potential litigation challenging the easement, is the township committee. And that should be a condition should the board approve this application.
Just briefly, I, I think part of the problem is the fact that if we go forward and if, if this board approves, that the township will feel that it needs to acquiesce, which I don't think is appropriate. I believe that the issue has to be resolved before vote is taken. I think it has to go to the committee. And, you know, I'm not going to reiterate what I said before. I think it would be appropriate to deal with this issue now rather than waste any more of the board's time so we can understand what the committee is going to do, the township committee, and, and then go from there. So that's our position. Thank you.
I just heard applicant's counsel talk about the escrow money and the money that the professionals on the board have spent on this application, and it's unfair to have spent it all and gotten to this point. On the other hand, what he is suggesting is we spend more of it in hearing this application to potentially get to the same spot down the road. So if applicant is not going to raise the issue that escrow money or whatever else has gone on up to now and going forward is somehow a defense as to a decision ultimately being rendered, then that's a discussion I have with the client. But one of the things I'm not necessarily interested in advising the board is that if you spend another nickel on this by anybody, you have somehow acquiesced into this application and this argument.
Yeah, Mr. O'Grady, I just have a question for you. I've looked over the documents that were submitted in the beginning with the application. And if, if I'm reading the Civic Clerk's records or listing of documents correctly, the easement, the deed easement was submitted with your original application package. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct, and it was identified by, by the board engineer at the time. And I'm not blaming Mr. Mayhew. I'm saying, if the board wanted to reject jurisdiction to hear the application, it can't be three years later.
That's not my question. I, I'm not going to get in the middle of whether it's reasonable, not reasonable, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent. I don't think that's really an issue right now. But my question is, I don't recall seeing, hearing, or being submitted any plans that set forth what was going to happen with that easement. It's as if we went forward with the complete application of saying, yeah, this is there, but we're not going to address it in any other documents. So my question is, for purposes of how to proceed, can you point me to any document that's previously been submitted on behalf of the applicant that addresses what should happen to this easement in this application?
I just refer to the, to the engineered site plan prepared by Mr. Ford and his testimony that I recall him speaking about this particular issue and where he proposes to relocate an easement. Now, remember, the easement wasn't, the township didn't say, this is where we want the easement. When that case was settled, the engineers said, this is an appropriate place to give access. It was never constructed. So the, the board is certainly on notice.
As is the applicant.
Right. That's my point, right?
This is a recorded easement. It, you know, let us, yes, it is the result of a settlement, something that we do all the time, whether we necessarily agree this is the appropriate place to have it or not, but the parties agreed as part of the resolution of the lawsuit, that, not this application, so the public is clearly aware, this is a lawsuit that dates back 20 years, between the township and the Castellas and Mr., and the like. So the parties agreed this is where it went, and the easement got recorded in the deed book in the county. So whether or not the parties really wanted the easement there or not is immaterial. It's there. If ultimately, it makes sense to move it somewhere else, I don't think the township committee is, even if for some determination down the road, this is a condition, I don't even know the township committee is obligated at that point to do anything about it. So ultimately, my concern is the complete, again, completeness is not a determination on the issue of the easement. It's the completeness whether the board will accept the application for purposes of meeting the checklist to come before the board for consideration. We're not going to get into the history of why this is taken. This is the issue before. If the board chooses to allow this application to be completed, I want it clearly on the record that the board's determination to do such is a waiver by the applicant as to any claims that this board has recognized this matter as adjudicated, or that the easement issue is resolved, or simply moving forward with the ease, with this discussion with the easement pending is a waiver by the board of any claims and or defenses it has going forward in any matter related to this application, including the expenditure of escrow money by Mr. Mayhew, myself, and whoever else for claims that those money should never have been expended, especially now that Mr. O'Grady has raises an issue over the fact that having spent it, we somehow have agreed to hear it. If anyone wants to comment on that, of the three gentlemen, I will be happy to hear it. But I want the record to clearly indicate this board moves forward on this application in any manner, shape, or form, that the board has not withdrawn or waived any rights, privileges or defenses it has in this matter.
I agree. That's reasonable.
I think it's just an equitable estoppel issue.
Well, yours is a detrimental reliance issue, so, for those of us who like to play, you know, lawyer.
I mean, if this, if this, this, this should have been a threshold issue perhaps, but to.
Well, it was a threshold issue, and it died on your end.
Now, this app, this board took jurisdiction of this application.
I'm, I'm going to say it for at least the third time, Michael, with all due respect. Granting completeness does not mean the board agrees to anything other than the application meets the checklist. If the checklist, your argument potentially is the checklist says all easements you're stuck with. But short of that, this notion that, for any application, that completeness somehow imbues legal rights other than the fact that it's complete and the clock starts, doesn't prevent this board from taking action down the road on an application.
That's not my argument. My argument is that the applicant relied upon.
Detrimental reliance.
Yes, and we've actually finished the application, the applicant's case in chief over many, many, many nights. And it would be unfair to not finish the application for what would, in many other circumstances, and I would say all other circumstances, be a condition. Now, I understand, I understand your arguments related to the, the case law on easements and, and your position that, you know, that, I don't want to give you, I don't want to give your arguments, give the municipalities arguments, but.
You don't, you don't want to give any credence to me. I understand.
No, but I, I think we understand each other. I mean, my point is, you know, we're, we're almost 1,000 days into this application.
Keep saying it, it's not going to get any shorter. It's, it's going to be 9:35, whether you say it, it's going to be 9:36 at this rate. The point, the point is, if the board is inclined, and I'm assuming Mr. Sinkovich and Mr. Ash may have other things they can move this forward, I want it clear on the record that this board in no way, shape, or form is condoning or approving the current application with an easement running through the middle of the building by simply allowing the applicant, among other reasons, by allowing the application to move to conclusion. And if the board determines at the end of this application that they are going to agree with Mr. Mayhew that they cannot approve this application because there is an easement running through the middle of the building, I anticipate you're going to argue, oh, well, I'm finished the application, so now I should get the approval. So I want it clear on the record and for the board's edification, the easiest issue for the board is to simply ask for postponement of the issue pending the outcome. If applicant doesn't want to do it, then either applicant agrees to waive any claims it may have on this issue, or the board can make a decision tonight if they choose not to extend the time of decision, which will get us exactly where I don't think the applicant wishes to be at this time. So, just for the benefit of the board, who, obviously, this has been going, so in March 15th of 2022, the township was in receipt of a letter from Fox Rothschild admitting to the fact that there was an application submitted for a warehouse, though the purpose of letters is to request the township committee accept the relocation of existing easement in favor of Township of Hillsborough as discussed by Township Planner Maskey in his completeness review memorandum. So basically stating that they need to get access rights. And the last paragraph of the letter, we, we would greatly appreciate the opportunity to discuss the easement relocation with the township committee. Please advise when this matter can be placed on agenda, and we appreciate committee's review and consideration. That's where it ended. No other correspondence to the township committee to put on the agenda for. No other correspondence to the Township Committee to put on the agenda for doing this. And I'm not, you know, the ship has sailed, as you said, about blame or whoever, you know, both sides, there's a lot of people that get paid a lot more money than we do sit up here. You would think that this would have been kind of ironed out before the shovel one was put into a plan. But it's obvious the applicant was aware that this had to be addressed back in March 15th of 2022. And proceeded to basically kick the can down the road and did nothing in hopes that maybe we wouldn't acquiesce or at some point provide that relief, which obviously hasn't happened because I've been on the board since before that. Just, I'm old, that's all. So it is disingenuous to say that we, as a board, 935 days, to your point, have kind of let this slide, whereas really it was your responsibility as an applicant to make sure this was addressed before you even got in front of our board. And so I'm not, I'm not going to sit here and allow the staff or the board to accept the burden of your argument there because it was clearly on your radar or your, Mr. Chang's radar and was never addressed. So I just wanted to share that, that letter. That's on Civic Clerk, by the way, for anyone else that wants to see that. So that being said, as a member of the Township Committee, I don't want to necessarily say that coming before the Township Committee to ask for an easement removal, I would probably have to abstain. I'm sure the Deputy Mayor would probably have to abstain. So that would leave three members of the board to approve the easement, which you had the opportunity, the ability to do and quite honestly, the responsibility to do. And I would think that should be done prior to doing anything else.
I would also point out, I'm concerned that if the applicant goes to the Township Committee for the request to move the easement, we have nothing to look at to see where the proposed easement would be moved to, how it would affect the entrance and exit of the property, how it would affect the stormwater management for the property, and the setbacks from the property. So I would agree that the application should be suspended or put on hold, and the applicant needs to do the right procedure and have the easement dealt with, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent. And I'd be concerned that we went forward, we potentially approved or denied an application. And if we approve, and then you go to the Township Committee, get an approval to move the easement, then you got to come back to us with a revised set of plans to establish where the easement's being moved.
So just one correction. The site plan accurately depicts where the applicant is suggesting the easement be moved.
Well, the applicant is suggesting, and this is all hypothetical, if the Township Committee would at some point agree to move the easement, there is no guarantee that where they agree to move it is where you're proposing to move it to. You're suggesting as part of this plan, they are no more bound by this plan than any other plan, except the easement is currently in X. And by the way, I have not looked at the judgment for this agreement. I don't even know, frankly, if the settlement agreement allows for the moving of the easement because it was part of a judicial settlement. It wasn't just some random agreement amongst the parties. This was part of a settlement of a litigation. And we've been down that road a couple of times before. So, again. Do you have anything to say, Chance?
I mean, just to reiterate our previous position, I mean, I believe that this issue has to be resolved before a vote can be taken, to the extent this is a jurisdictional issue. And frankly, as I sit here right now, I am not sure if it is or is not. Those jurisdictional issues can't be waived. There's no, you know, detrimental reliance that would extinguish a jurisdictional issue. And I guess the last comment on this is, to the extent that we do move forward this evening with the whatever amount of minutes we have left, we also don't waive any of our arguments or defenses or assertions that we may bring up after tonight. But that doesn't change our position that we, I agree with Committeeman Lepani and Board Member Raderowitz, that we should suspend this and deal with this issue now.
The only way the board can suspend this application tonight, I believe, is for the applicant to agree to extend the time of decision. The applicant doesn't agree to extend the time of decision, then therefore either the application moves forward and we continue to, my words, kick the can down the proverbial road, or the board makes a decision tonight on the application as it currently exists.
I'm kind of torn, as I usually am, but I mean, there seems, well, you know, I mean, one of the comments of Mr. Raderowitz meant, said, I think I may have done this in some previous application, I want to know what we're signing up for. So with regards to any potential revision, but since there seems to be a proposal already on the site plan, I would think it wouldn't take very long to go to the Township Committee showing them, this is where you want it moved to. And since that's the only option, it should be relatively quick to get a yes or no answer from Township Committee before we continue because.
I won't speak on behalf of the Township Committee, but I will. As a former member, Mr. Chairman, quicken government action are by definition oxymorons. And I would not place on the record that this should be a relatively expedited matter for a committee that I doubt is going to want to expedite it without understanding what it's dealing with.
You're not referring to the Mountain View Park because that was, there was only two of us left, I and the committee and Free Holder Palmer were the last ones standing when that project started. But I'd like to think this would be a little bit quicker than that.
My only comment with relate, related to kind of the efficiency of this is that, you know, I think it's problematic. Let's assume scenario A, the applicant says, we're, just go to vote tonight, okay? Well, you, you're then, you know, we would be making the decision to cut off their last witness, okay? And I, what I would hate to see is a remand just for Clay Emerson's testimony. That doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me after the amount of time, effort, energy, money to get to this point. I don't think I've ever developed a clearer record. Now, I understand there's legal issues. I understand there's planning issues. But we've had every single professional witness that could possibly testify. So the record is pretty robust at this point. Our case is over.
I'll grant you that you have filled the record. Whether or not it is, it is sustainable, depending on everything, and with the board, et cetera, I'm not even going to, and I don't want anyone else to respond, please, thank you. The day is, that's left to better people than I at the moment. I think the issue frankly is what's here and what's now.
Are there going to be any additional witnesses beyond Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Yes. So there's quite a bit more to come and.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. O'Grady, you indicated you plan on recalling Mr. Ford.
Correct.
And possibly wanting to examine Mr. Mayhew and Mr. Coys.
That's correct.
So there's only not one more witness left. And importantly, unless you want to define Coys and Mayhew as non-professional, and I won't discuss that, there are going to be more professional witnesses potentially, and Ford.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly don't want to see the waste of everyone's time and money. You know, at this point, again, I think there's a clear option that the applicant has already provided as to where this can be relocated to the Township Committee. Again, doesn't have, you know, a lot to.
Mr. Chairman.
Analyze to go and make a decision.
I would indicate to this board that the Township Committee can do whatever it wishes to do with its easement, whether or not the applicant has put forward a potential viable place to put it. It is not this board's determination, nor any member of this board's determination to prejudge what the Township Committee members who are eligible to participate in that discussion, assuming that Mr. Lepani and Mr. Chicorelli are excused, to determine whether or not that will in fact be the magic choice, if it is ever the magic choice. So I would really suggest at the moment that we not speculate on what the committee will or will not do.
Well, the point I was trying to drive at is that if they decide that that's not the location, then we're looking at a whole new set of site plans.
If they decide not to grant.
You know, granted, this gets even more, you know, time consuming. That's all I'm just trying to drive at.
I want the record to indicate that it's speculation at best by a member, not necessarily binding on anyone.
Yes.
Based on the fact that at the moment, I don't hear anybody suggesting an extension to go looking for the application. So it's either board's pleasure.
I would say this, we'll agree to another extension, but we're not necessarily going to agree that, that this board needs to wait for a determination by the Township Committee. If I discuss with my professional team that we prefer a vote at the end of the next meeting, then that's what we're going to, that's what we're going to suggest. Again, I don't think this board has jurisdiction to require a movement of an easement. It's never been done before in my recollection.
No, actually, Mr. O'Grady, it's an interesting comment you make. The board is not seeking to move the easement, you are. Not you per se, your client, so I want to make sure that the record is clear that it is not you. The client is asking this board to agree as a condition to move an easement, not within its jurisdiction.
That's not my point. My point is, it's an outside agency determination.
This is not a utility easement. This is not a railroad track where everybody knows, some, a utility, railroad tracks can't be moved. Utility easements, I'm not even sure can be moved. But the fact of the matter remains is that let us not believe that somehow this board is subject, this is a condition this board can agree or not to agree. That's a discussion for future time. If the applicant is willing to extend it one more meeting to see where this goes and for the board to consider the options available, et cetera, or whether or not objectors want to finish Dr. Emerson or not, it's their call. I don't disagree potentially with Mr. O'Grady's potential that one of the options the court may do if it ends up in court is remand it back to finish the application. That's generally the way it goes. The courts are loathe under the case law to make planning or zoning board decisions unilaterally, at least on the first round, as Mr. O'Grady and I and Sinkavich and Ash have lived through more times than I choose to mention. So you're asking for one more, you're offering one more extension? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm being essentially painted into a corner.
No. No, you can, you can stay in the corner. It's just, it leaves, it leaves the board with limited choices in their own corner.
What I would suggest is that we extend the meeting to allow the applicant and the applicant's professional teams to make a determination on whether they will or will not seek Township Committee approval for the relocation of the easement. If we say that we'll do that, then we can extend this application for however long it takes for the Township Committee to act. If we do not, then Mr. Ash can decide if he wants to finish, finish his final witness or not. And ultimately, I believe that would be a board decision, however.
So you're saying you're adjourned for now to make a decision on whether we're going to proceed or not? Okay. I just want to make sure I understood what you're saying.
I just want to state further record to avoid any confusion. We are in no way waiving our right to finish the testimony that we seek to provide based on this adjournment at any time. We fully intend, to the extent this goes forward, to finish Dr. Emerson's testimony and to put on the other testimony that we have.
I'm assuming that what may make the most sense for the board is to find a night of which this is the only proverbial game in town, and we can plot this thing out where it goes. And the recommendation, Mr. Chairman, if that is what Mr. O'Grady is suggesting, and everybody is holding on to its cards and not putting anything on the table, so to speak, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Coys would be October the 10th.
That's unavailable that evening.
I make that point.
According to my scorecard, I have November 14th as being available.
What's on the 10th?
We have two applications that have time of decisions, Evergreen and TV.
You mean both, Mr. O'Grady? No, okay. Not yours for exchange. How did that happen? Mr. Chairman, I know you have been loathe, and I'm going to throw it out there, to use a business meeting. But if you all want this done, or not done, but at least confined to one night, you can either do it the 14th of November or the last business meeting in October. Well, if it's us, you're going to do something, you've got something else on the job. I'm going by my calendar.
I would say November 14th.
All right. That's the magic.
Can I just make one suggestion, though? Since Mr. O'Grady needs to discuss with the professionals, clearly he should be able to come up with an answer as to how his client and his professionals want to proceed, that being going to the Township Committee on the easement issue first. Shouldn't we be able to put a earlier date than November 14th as a date by which the applicant should respond and advise how they plan on proceeding? Because then at that point, council knows exactly how they're going to proceed, whether we need to be ready for the 14th for the additional testimony and to continue, or the 14th is going to essentially, essentially get canceled and rescheduled.
14th is not going to get canceled today.
Well, this particular application won't be heard that day.
No, it'll get heard. The question is, what will happen with it? It will have, this, this application will get heard on another night. The issue will be what the board is going to do relative to the application at that point.
Okay.
But I think Mr. Raderowitz's proposal is not.
You can say it, unreasonable.
No, it's not an appropriate comment, which is, if we're talking about a November 14th hearing date, then part, then Mr. O'Grady and his team, and potentially Mr. Ash and Mr. Sinkavich and his, their team can decide where they want to go going forward come November 14th.
I just want to make it clear, you know, our suggestion is that we finish the application. So it's going to be a board decision whether you're going to allow. And again, it's not even our case in chief, it's the objectors'.
Well, no, you, no, we just went, we just went through this where it is yours because right now, we're, we're sitting here with a recommendation from the board engineer that we suspend this application until such time as this is resolved with the Township Committee, whenever that may be. The board is trying to find, at least at the moment, some kind of midpoint based on your suggestion to see whether or not we can move this forward. And maybe what makes sense in the interim is for somebody, is for the attorneys for the, for the parties to give us some idea where they think this should go. If ultimately we get to November 14th, assuming November 14th is the magic, and we are at the same point we are today, then either Mr. Ash. the same point we are today, then either Mr. Ash can go forward or not go forward, I think he'll make his own decision, and the Board may or may not at some point along the line be required to make a decision. But I think it's reasonable, as Mr. Raderowitz has suggested, for the parties to at least give us some indication, before the, in advance of the 14th of November, if that's the date, what their plans are. You may all go back and decide, you know what, we'll go to the committee and suspend it. He may decide, I'm gonna see, let's roll the dice and see where it goes, I don't know.
But we won't know if Mr. Ash is gonna be able to continue the objector's case in chief, what you're telling me.
No, what you're saying is that, no, Mr. Ash has a decision to make as well as you. You need to decide whether or not you are willing to go forward with the application as is, and not address the easement issue, but continue the position that it's a condition. And at that point, if that's the situation, then it's up to Mr. Ash to decide in advance, so he'll know in advance, whether Doc, the man sitting behind you who looks so happy tonight, is going to be back up finishing his testimony and whatever else is going to happen. We may ultimately end up, guess what, we're gonna finish the application totally, and it's still up to the Board what they want to do. But I'm suggesting that 30 days before the next hearing, both that you and Mr. Ash both at least communicate to me what your hopes are. If the answer is you want to go forward as is, then it's up to Jordan to decide whether he wants to go forward and let everybody know.
Again, if I may interject, it would also seem prudent to me, knowing that this issue is out there, that the applicant get ahold of the Township Committee and go through the processes to get this question on the calendar, so that perhaps by the 14th, which is two months away, you'd be able to report back to us and say, hey, this is gonna be heard on the first week of December, so here's where we stand, we'll have an answer. Or you may have an answer already by then, if the Township Committee can do that. So I think it would be very prudent for everybody to agree, to take the opportunity to decide if you're going to go that route now, notify everybody, and that'll certainly make the 14th much easier, depending upon what your client chooses to do.
You don't know if it's gonna be easier, but at least be something.
Well, it'll, it'll...
Again, folks, I caution this Board very carefully to presuppose what another body is going to do, any more than you would be unhappy if another body presupposed what you were going to do. I understand the desires here. I think the proposal here is, if applicant's willing to extend it to November 14th, I would suggest a time of decision at the end of the year, so we stop going through this. If we're gonna make a decision, we're gonna make a decision whether it's November 15th or November 14th or December 31st, but I'll leave that to Mr. O'Grady. And that 30 days prior to the next meeting, that both parties advise my office as to what their positions are, and if they're diametrically opposed, at least I'll let them know what the diametrically opposed positions are.
I mean, I, yeah, but I mean, that's fine, I just, this issue was brought up by Mr. Ash earlier in this case, and to the extent, I'm not saying that the Board is waiving that issue. I'm arguing is that, to the extent that the application doesn't finish, to me, it seems that that issue had been resolved, and the Board determined that we're gonna hear the application.
That, that may ultimately end up counsel being in issue before somebody who has got a black robe and sitting somewhere. I'm just trying to get through whatever we can get through here in the absence of, unless, as I said, both parties may come back and say, you know what, Board, roll, Board, make a decision. We're gonna reserve and see what happens on our testimony, and you decide that you're not in, your client is not interested in going to the committee, Board, make a decision. I don't necessarily think that's what happened, but it's possible. So that's my suggestion, Mr. Chairman, extend this matter to the next meeting to November 14th. I'm suggesting a time of decision December 31st, and that Mr. O'Grady and Mr. Ash slash Sinkavich advise me of what their clients' respective positions are by...
Sorry.
Let's see, I look at my calendar.
So by Monday, October 14th?
By Tuesday, October 15th, because Monday is supposedly a holiday.
I'm gonna just extend the time of decision to November 15th.
I would just note that, in order to aid our ability to provide Mr. Bernstein with helpful information, October 14th, any communication with the Township Committee, if we could be copied on it, would be helpful to that end.
I would suggest both parties copy each other, but basically, the letter is to me.
So just for understanding, since the time of decision's only gonna go to November 15th, meaning that we're guaranteed one more meeting, if the objectors are not finished presenting their witnesses, where do we stand at that point?
We'll be right back to where we are tonight, in the same situation, with tonight's time of decision, assuming none of this happened, was tomorrow. So we'd be right back to where we are with not finishing the application and then having to make a decision.
Well, and I guess that's my point, if there's not another extension of the time of decision, do we have to then, as a, you know, as a Board, as a governing body, I'm sorry, you know, that we would have to decide whether to take a vote?
No, the Board, well, no. If there is no extension of the time of decision rule in general, irrespective of the situation today, the Board is left with no alternative but to either take an action or understand that if you let the, if you do nothing, the application is approved.
Okay.
And that's not my decision, that's the Court's decision on the interpretation of Miss Malaney's law. Taking no action, and the time of decision rule comes and goes, you have effectively approved the application.
Even if the objectors haven't finished?
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
Which is why the Board will take, make a decision before the time of decision rule expires.
So, just, so I'm gonna set expectations, you know, besides all the communication, but on the night of the November 14th, we will have a hard stop at 10:00 PM, regardless of where things are at, and I expect, as Mr. Bernstein said, if there's no extension in time of decision, we will...
It may not be as hard stop at 10:00 PM, but it'll be a hard stop for the hearing.
Right, well, that's what I mean. But that's gonna, well, it will be, well, hard stop for the hearing, and then shortly after that...
Well, you'll see where we are at that point.
We'll see where we are, but it would be highly likely that we would probably be deciding to take an action.
I'll just note that we are, all intentions to move as efficiently as we possibly can through our testimony, and again, to the extent we don't get through on that date, we waive none of our rights, we reserve all our rights.
Understood. I just want to make sure that everyone knows that.
All right.
Depending on what happens on the night of the 14th...
And Mr. Coys's office, nor mine, are instructed to not put anything more on the agenda that night.
All right, affirmative. All right, and I will also request, even though we will have matters not on the agenda, I may reserve that, to move that to the end of the evening.
That's, it's a decision of the Board.
So, just make sure that we start...
Is applicant's counsel, objector's counsel in agreement with what has been discussed now for the last 15 minutes? In the sense of agreeing to it, that the matter will be continued without further notice till 7:00 PM, Thursday, November the 14th, where soon thereafter the matter may be heard, but without further notice, that the parties will advise my office and each other as to their positions, honorable for the close of business, Tuesday, October 15th, on their position as to what's been discussed tonight, and that depending on same, the Board will be prepared to deal with, I will advise the Board accordingly.
Right, and the time of decision's been extended to November 15th.
November 15th.
And I request, Mr. Coys, literally nothing on the agenda, including meaning minutes or any business matters, like I want to hit the ground running at 7 o'clock.
Understood, Mr. Chairman.
Just assuming the Chairman is here at 7.
Well, if someone brings some pizza or something, yeah.
Mr. O'Grady has signed his life away, Ms. Ball?
Yeah, correct.
Thank you, Ms. Ball.
So with that, I need a motion to extend, well, I'm gonna say as what Eric outlined it, I'm not gonna repeat it.
Motion as I have outlined.
Can I just have a question, point of clarification?
Yes.
Let's assume, and I don't, I have no idea what my clients are gonna do, let's assume that we say, we're not, we're not going to the Township Committee. We want this Board to vote. Would then, this Board make an act, would make a decision on whether to proceed or to...
The Board could make a decision whether to proceed, the Board could make a decision to let Mr. Ash and his, Mr. Sinkavich finish their testimony, the Board may let the thing go on, but at that point, depending on how it takes, you're back in control of the issue of time decision, so you may be the one who ultimately moves the Board to take an action one way or another.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, so may have a motion to extend as, this application as outlined by Eric, Mr. Bernstein.
All moved. Second.
Okay.
Who moved it?
Committeeman?
Thank you.
And the Vice Chair seconded. Any final comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Raderowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Committeeman Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peazin?
Yes.
Chair Sriraj?
Yes.
So with that, just a reminder that we are back here next week, on the 12th.
For more funding for Volodyne.
For additional, at 7:00 PM, just please notify the Plainboard Office if anyone's unable to attend, and with that, I will entertain a motion of adjournment.
All moved.
Okay? Okay, all in favor? I, we're adjourned, good night, see everyone next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.